It's not put off what we can do, so. I'd like to call to order the planning commission hearing of February tenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Could I please have roll call?
Yeah, Commissioner Barbo.
You're muted, Steve. Here.
Commissioner McDonald.
Here.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Here.
Commissioner Wirick.
Here.
Vice Chair Barnett.
Here.
Chair Wellender.
Here. Very good. May I ask, Sheila, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance? And if you wish to either lip sync or mute, go right ahead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very good. Thank you, Sheila. Now, as you can see, we, this will hopefully be the last virtual planning commission hearing, and as we know, we can participate by viewing online, we can participate by submitting comments via email, or we can participate via Zoom. And so with that, I would like to open it up for, open up to the public for comments on items that are not currently on the agenda. Do we have anyone, Wendy?
No, Chair Wellender, no one is raising their hand at this time.
Okay, seeing that, I'll close that and move on. At this point, I'd like to have my fellow commissioners review and comment on accepting the agenda as posted or with recommendations.
Move to approve.
Second, actually, let me speak up on that. I would like to, if my fellow commissioners find it acceptable, I'd like to just switch and slip eight point two above eight point one. And that just has been a little bit more efficient in the use of our city attorney. Is there a second or an acceptance of that, or?
Move to.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call them, please.
Commissioner Barbo.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Is this just on the swapping of the agenda item, or is it also the consent calendar?
Just the swapping of eight two in place of eight one.
Yes, please.
Commissioner Wirick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barnett.
Aye.
Chair Wellender.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Very good. Thank you. Now, we're going to be moving on to our consent calendar, and as you can see, there are four items.
Oh, Chair Wellender, I'm, excuse me for interrupting. I would just like to say that late correspondence was received, and it was uploaded to the document center. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Thank you for interrupting. Now, we can move on to the consent calendar. As you see, we have four items on the consent calendar. And I believe before I entertain any comments from my fellow commissioners, I'd like to open it up to the public and see if anyone would like to make a comment on any of the items that currently are on the consent calendar.
Now, aren't two of them continued to March tenth, right?
Sorry?
Two of those are continued to March tenth?
That is correct. Do we have anybody, Wendy?
Yes, there is. Someone is raising their hand with the name meeting backup. So, go ahead, you can speak.
Yes, this is Heather Martindale. I'm not sure if this is the appropriate time for me to speak on behalf of the agenda item, but.
Yes, it is, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Well, I think it's the appropriate time to request it be pulled off the consent calendar.
No, actually, you can actually speak to this item, and I'll be more than happy to give you three minutes. So, please go right ahead.
It'll be just a few seconds. I just wanted to state that I continue to object to Mr. Store's determination and the quote facts used to support the findings. I've already placed an appeal, which will be heard, it looks like, with the city council level, at the city council level, and that's it.
Very good. Well, thank you. Wendy, do we have anybody else from the public?
No, Chair Wellender.
Very good. Then I'll close the public portion of that and bring it back to my fellow commissioners to discuss any action or not on the consent calendar. I do have a couple of comments on the meeting notes for December second and for January thirteenth, and I'm not sure if it warrants them to be pulled, or I guess it would have to be if I have comments.
No, you can make your comments, and if the rest of the commissioners agree, they'll be incorporated into the motion to approve.
Okay. Very good. Then I'll go ahead and take my. On, I'd like to just on the January thirteenth meeting back on the eight fifty-nine Austin Avenue, which we basically granted approval for the partial demolition. I know that I had a little, I expressed concerns about wanting to maintain all the existing grades underneath the large redwood trees that was, that was going to drive the project to not be able to provide a carport or a garage. And I saw no language there, and I felt quite strongly about that. And am I either misreading, or can somebody give me some thought on that, please?
Well.
Chair, was that language that you were talking about, of that concern conveyed in the motion? Because as you know, we do action minutes here as opposed to verbatims or even summary minutes. So what we're doing in the minutes is just recording the action that was taken. So if it was not involved in the actual language in the motion, then it probably was captured correctly. But if it was in the motion, defer to Mr. Walter here if we need to do anything else.
Well, I know I was expressing it passionately enough to want it to be in the resolution. My timing may have been off. It may have been a post-motion comment. To be honest, I don't recall.
Is there something in the motion?
I saw no language in the motion that addressed the concern about keeping the grades as is.
I'd suggest that this be tabled and staff be allowed to take a look at the videos to corroborate your concerns and see whether, in fact, it was part of the motion.
Yeah. I support that, if that's all right with everybody else.
Yes.
Excellent. So, thank you. And that's the extent of my comments. So then may I entertain a motion on the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair, I may have misunderstood. I thought you had questions about two cents a minute.
I actually had two questions on one set. Thinking it was two questions on two sets, so.
Okay, thank you.
I'm wrong.
So which set remains available for action tonight, Mr. Chair?
The December second, two thousand and twenty-one minutes are fine as submitted, and then where I would like a review would be the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay.
Why don't you go ahead and adopt a motion to do that, then? Or, Mr. Walter, would they do that in addition to approving the rest of the consent?
Yes, I can make one motion, approve the consent with that modification to item number seven point one.
So I would like to request someone for a motion if they so are so moved.
Move to approve.
Sir, a second.
The second with the modification is that we are not approving the January thirteen minutes, but they are being pulled off the calendar for tonight so that they can be reviewed.
Thank you. And we have a second, and so may I have roll call, please?
Commissioner Barbo.
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald.
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Wirick.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barnett.
Aye.
Chair Wellender.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Now, we will go ahead and then move on to our public hearing, and we will begin. The first item will be not eight point one, but eight point two, which is to discuss, consider, and take possible action on recommending to the city council the introduction of an ordinance amending the Sonoma municipal amending title section nineteen point two residential component, et cetera. And at this point, I would love to have some staff comment, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll take care of that item for you this evening. Before you tonight is proposed revisions to our municipal code to add language to our commercial zone and our mixed-use zone to allow for options to increase residential development in the city, to give options that are there. Currently, we have language that allows for a waiver and conditions or circumstances in which a residential waiver can occur. What we have attempted to do is to remove some ambiguity in some of the language. For example, you may recall the should normally be languages in there that we've removed or proposing to remove a staff. You'll see that we've provided an example of what our interpretation is of the context of the policy relating to how you calculate what a residential component should be, and I'll go into that in just a moment. So we provided language that is consistent within the residential section and also in the mixed-use section. I will point out there is an administrative or clerical error that is the same, that isn't the same as the mixed-use zone as it is commercial. So I'll just talk about it in the one location, and that is in your current packet, there's a bullet number four, and that number four should be merged. It's a hanging sentence that should go into paragraph number three. So apologies for that administrative error there. So there will be a total of six subcomponents of paragraph E. That's the first thing. Also, for your discussion tonight, subsequent to the preparation of the packet, staff has been discussing perhaps adding language within the context of this particular commercial or mixed-use portion of the code such that we assure that any of these options that we provided, one through six, in the RCP, the residential component, excuse me, the residential component plan, that we would then have the ability to make sure that the choices, if selected, are equal to or greater than equivalent to any fee that is subsequent that the city council may adopt in the future at some point when that will be. This afternoon, I sent your council, commission some language from the general plan that defines what the mixed-use designation is about, and also some zoning code language that is the actual definition of what a mixed-use development is. I have, I would like to have the ability, Wendy, if I could, to share screen. Is that doable? I will give it a.
It sure is.
I'll give it a shot here. I'm going to try to explain the way that we've been able to deal with the residential component. And and I'm happy, can you see that now?
Yes.
I don't know if I can expand it. Maybe I can expand it. Does that help?
I'm going to be bigger.
Okay, so big particular scenarios here that I'd like to provide. Number one is a generic response. If I were a developer and I had in mind that I wanted to develop five thousand square feet of commercial in the commercial zone, the language that we have is that, again, assuming this is no longer should normally be, this would be a fixed requirement, a mandatory requirement of fifty percent. I've assumed that for this discussion for now. My obligation as a developer would then be that I, because of the fifty percent requirement, because of my five thousand square feet that I'm proposing, I would have an obligation to provide twenty-five hundred square feet in residential use. And that may or may not be two twelve hundred square foot homes or one twenty-five square foot home, whatever. At the end of the day, I would then need to, I would be proposing, because of that residential requirement, an additional twenty-five hundred square feet on top of my five thousand proposal that I have that I ultimately want to build. And that would then equate to seventy-five hundred square feet. The language in our current code requires basically that, well, excuse me, in the draft code, not my current code, I misspoke, that if we have that same five thousand square feet, and I want to propose two thousand square feet of residential, if my obligation is to do fifty percent of that residential, excuse me, the commercial component, I would be required to provide a residential area of twenty-five hundred square feet. But in my proposal, I'm only proposing two thousand square feet. This is the example that we put in the text. Then my obligation would be an additional five hundred square feet. At the end of the day, the total building area would be seventy-five hundred square feet, the same as the prior discussion that I had. So when it comes down to the existing code, I called it the no incentive code, and maybe that's probably not the best way to articulate it. But the language is clear in that it appears that one could say, with my five thousand square feet and the two thousand square feet in my, in the example that we put in the draft code, my proposal to the city would be a seven thousand square foot development. If one takes fifty percent of that seven thousand, then I have an obligation to provide thirty-five hundred square feet as my component. But because I'm providing two thousand square feet, that leaves me with an additional fifteen hundred square feet that I have to provide. Again, this is if you add the residential to the commercial to come up with this residential component that is needed, which means that I have a total building area that I need of eighty-five hundred. To me, as a developer, I would say, you know what, it doesn't make sense for me to come into the city with a mixed-use project of five thousand square feet and two thousand square feet, because I could just come into the commercial zone and ask for five thousand square feet of development and get that entitlement, along with an obligation to provide twenty-five hundred square feet, and my net result is seventy-five hundred. Rather than having to go down to the third on that literal reading of the code, that means I have to provide a residential component on top of the residential component that I'm providing, if you will. So that, to me, is clearly showing that we need to amend the language. We have attempted to do that. Now, whether we've done it successfully or not, I don't know. I'd like to think we have. But certainly, we have eliminated the should normally be comprised language, and we have removed that and made it a shall. I think we received that feedback loud and clear, and it makes a lot of sense to do that. So we've inserted that example in the code and the text. We can certainly change the policy, but this is our effort to provide other options to the city to allow for land dedication, off-site construction, acquisition, rehab, and conversion, or an in-loof fee, which will be later determined by the city council, obviously subject to NEXUS studies and the like at that point in the future. This concludes staff's presentation, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Does any fellow commissioners have questions for staff at this point? Yes, Mr. Barbos. You're muted.
Can you share screen and show us the exact language that now exists? Because I feel like that we've been down this road before, and I think a number of us have a completely different interpretation of the language than you do. So I'd like to look at the actual language.
Yeah, Wendy, could you pull up the municipal code? It's nineteen, I think nineteen point ten oh six oh, I think.
Okay.
I think it's nineteen ten oh two oh.
Oh, two oh, thank you. Commissioner Barbos, would that be the commercial and the mix, or do you want to focus on the commercial?
Well, it's the same language in both of them, as I recall.
Yeah, in the mixed-use, we do have a provision where you can get a waiver for commercial. But I think for the, for the specific language, it's the same, yeah.
My point and my question right now has to do with whether the residential component is fifty percent of the commercial or fifty percent of the total building area. And I have looked at this in the past and felt pretty strongly that it was fifty percent of the total building area. And I know we've had some discussion about that before.
Yeah, it's clear that it does say, the language, total proposed building area. My point on the policy side is then, great, you can have it be a total proposed building area, but who's going to come in with any residential component? I mean, with any residential as part of the project? Because if you do the additive thing, there's no incentive then there to do that. They just kind of go with my first scenario. So I don't disagree that the language says what it says. The policy doesn't make sense to me.
Well, wouldn't I guess they don't have the option, absent a waiver, to ignore the fifty percent of the total building area residential component?
That's great. I've never argued that. What I'm arguing is I would only come in with five thousand square feet as my project, knowing that I have an obligation to half that and add that to my commercial to come up with seventy-five hundred square feet. So, yes, I'm on the hook for twenty-five hundred, and I'll do that and have that as part of my project. But that's the only commitment I have to make is that seventy-five hundred.
Well, no, if you came in with, under this scenario, the way I understand you, if it's a five thousand square foot project that's proposed in total, then they would put in twenty-five hundred commercial, twenty-five hundred residential.
See, I don't know how it says that, but I'm open to your discussion. I don't, it doesn't say that to me, the way I read it. That says to me that fifty percent of the total of what's being proposed, not, that to me would seem to be a hundred percent, five thousand commercial and five thousand residential. That, to me, doesn't say that. I see a fifty percent there.
Maybe I jump in a little bit here. Commissioner Barbos, these are very interesting comments you're making. I don't think one is right or wrong. I think that is up for the commission to decide on a basis of policy, which makes the most sense here. What seems to be the most reasonable? Is it your interpretation? You take a look at a five thousand square foot commercial project, and you read the existing language. I think it can be argued both ways, but your interpretation, I think, is reasonable. The total square footage of the project does not increase. It's just that fifty percent has to be devoted to residential and the balance to be devoted to commercial. Mr. Store reads this existing language to require an additional fifty percent added to the five thousand square feet, and that fifty percent is twenty-five hundred square feet. And depending on whether the commercial proposal includes residential already or not, the additional residential component then would enhance an existing residential proposal or not. So I think really, it's really up to the commission to decide what kind of interpretation you're going to recommend to the council, and that would then be incorporated into the draft that we send to the council.
I presume that's for our discussion right downstream here.
Yeah.
We can leave that up on the screen, Mr. Chair, if that's going to be of help. Maybe after maybe after the commission, we could take public comment and then put it back up, maybe.
Yeah, I think I do. Any of the other commissioners have questions for staff before I open it up to the public for comment?
I have a question.
Yes, Sheila.
So this is for both commercial and mixed-use zoning, correct?
Yeah, yeah, the language in mixed-use is the same as this.
So give me a sense of how many properties are we talking about within Sonoma?
Well, in commercial, we generally have the west leg, if you will, of Napa Street, but all of our mixed-use basically goes from south of Maple all the way down to, you know, almost the four corners on both sides of the road. So we've got quite an extensive mixed-use area. And I'd be happy to share the zoning map with you, Commissioner O'Neil. Would that be helpful?
Yeah, and we don't need to do it right now, but I'm just, I'm trying to get a sense of how big of a scale we're talking. Are we talking like, you know, a few properties here and there? Are we talking a lot of properties?
Yeah, we're talking a lot of properties. Let me see if I can, Commissioner Barnett, Vice Chair Barnett has his hand up. Let me see if I can get my zoning map ready to go to share after his comments.
Please, Larry. Mr. Barnett?
I just want to say that with regard to a residential component, if a commercial parcel is greater than a half acre, then it is contingent upon them, under the current language of the code, to dedicate fifty percent of the building area to housing. If it is a commercial parcel under a half acre, they are under no compulsion to put housing in at all. And none of the provisions that we're talking about tonight apply. They only apply in the cases of parcels one-half acre or larger.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
All right, I have the, Mr. Chair, I do have the zoning map up, so I'll share that here in just a second. Can you see the screen?
Yep.
So here you can see the West Napa corridor. You'll see that we do have some smaller parcels that are mixed on the north and south side of West Napa. But the majority of this color on either side of Broadway is where we have the mixed-use and where it would be applicable. It goes down to Andrews a little bit on the west side of Broadway there. But principally, we're talking about Broadway. One, one discussion I've had, even this afternoon, is it's clear to me that there can be different interpretations of what mixed-use is really about or what it's trying to accomplish. I think the goal is to try to provide ways to provide more housing. That was the intent. And I understand that a lot of this pink, excuse me, purple was perhaps multifamily or high-density residential at one point. But as I said at the outset, in the mixed-use zone, we have the ability to provide a commercial waiver, similar to the residential waiver that we have in the commercial. But in the mixed-use zone, we also have the ability to do a waiver for that in the mixed-use zone for residential. So it would seem to me that the city's goal to, if it really is to get more housing and not so much the commercial piece in the mixed-use zone, let's figure out a way how to get some of this mixed-use along Broadway, perhaps, back to high-density residential. Because as you can see from this, we have a lot of lots there. They're very small in size and maybe need to be consolidated. They're very small in size and maybe need to be consolidated to get some useful benefit to get some higher-density housing. I'll stop sharing now. So yeah, I think it'd be helpful for us to get some direction from the commission on what you'd like to present. We don't necessarily have to get all the verbiage down tonight, but certainly that direction could come from your commission to give it to staff so that we can then craft the language. If there's a problem with the way that I presented in the staff report and the concern of Commissioner Barbos, clearly, let's just get some language and get some thoughts transmitted to the commission, to the council.
What's our timeline? Are we under the gun for getting this to the council for their approval? Or do we have a little time on this?
This is a regular ordinance, I believe.
Okay, okay. Very good. Any other commission questions to our staff before I open it up? Seeing none at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public for their comment.
Thank you. Bill Willers would like to speak. Go ahead, Bill.
Please, Mr. Willers, you're welcome.
Good evening, Chair Wellender, members of the commission. I think that the planning commission should take a careful look at the current language and understand the original intent was to provide housing within the commercial zone and the mixed use zone as a way of bringing pedestrians as well as housing into the core of our town. That was the reason that the mixed use zone was created. It was created with the idea of the traditional mixed use properties that surround the plaza, which traditionally were ground floor commercial with living above. It was always intended to be a primarily residential district. In fact, during the history of the mixed use zone, the planning commission had actually changed the language within the mixed use zone to allow the commercial component to be removed. In other words, create an entirely one-hundred-percent mixed use housing project. I believe that the housing component plan should be abandoned at this point. I don't think that the housing component, that we should be taking up anything in the way of option of relief from creating housing in our community. The housing component plan essentially eliminates whatever the housing potential would be on a commercial or mixed use property. Within our housing, within our zoning code, each parcel has, if it's a residential capable project, has a housing allotment that's identified in our zoning, in our housing element. Those have accounted for our RENA numbers. If we trade ten units of housing on a commercial property, which is currently accounted for, or on a mixed use property, which is currently accounted for, and allow that to shift to a property that has an equal allotment, we've essentially gotten rid of ten units of housing. So I believe that the housing component plan should be abandoned from any changes that you make tonight to this ordinance. I believe the ordinance should say shall require a fifty percent component of the total building area. When, you know, our zoning code controls the area of a building via FAR. That is the potential building area of any property in the commercial or mixed use zone. If I have a ten thousand square foot property, which is less than, if I have a twenty thousand square foot property, almost a half an acre, and I have an FAR one, I have a potential of twenty thousand square feet of development. If I max that development out, ten, fifty percent of that, ten thousand square feet, should be devoted to residential construction. That was always the intent of the residential component in the mixed use and commercial zone. It was not fifty percent of the commercial area. It was always a fifty percent of the total building area of a proposal. And I believe that the planning commission, if this is vague language, the planning commission would do its due diligence by proposing to the city council to clear that up and make that the policy of the city. The only way we're going to bring housing into our community is to stop waiving. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willers. All right, Wendy, anyone else?
Still other members of the public have their hand raised.
Okay, then I'd like to close the public portion and bring it back to commissioners for discussion. And now, start with you, Commissioner Barnett.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I think Bill has raised some compelling points. Certainly has always been my understanding that the housing component required on commercial parcels over a half an acre was to be fifty percent of the total building area. And I see no reason to change that. Obviously, moving from a should be to a shall at this point is an important step to take and reinforces the city's commitment to making sure that housing is getting built. I think the other points that have been raised are all significant about, for example, allowing a commercial parcel that requires housing to place that housing on a different parcel. Because as Bill has pointed out, all of these parcels at this point have an assumed allocation of housing in terms of twenty units per acre, which has always been the number allowed based on our commercial zoning code. So moving ten units, as in his example, from a commercial parcel that requires housing to another parcel just simply means that ten parcels that would have been built on the commercial parcel won't get built. And those ten units only will be put on a parcel that already had an allocation of housing at twenty units an acre if it was a commercial parcel. So I think that that gives a lot of food for thought. But in thinking about this recently, over the last few days, I've come to a bigger conclusion, which is that we're right in the middle, or at least at the beginnings now, of an extended housing element process that isn't going to be completed probably until much later in the year. Part of that housing element process is going to be an evaluation of the existing parcels in town and a determination by the city of how it wants to see those parcels used in further of its housing goals. But we haven't really established the city's housing goals. We have a RENA number, which has been imposed upon us, which I guess becomes part of a goal. But in terms of how that RENA number is achieved, where those parcels are, which ones we identify as the most likely or best parcels to use for a higher intensity, a higher-density housing in the urban, in the downtown urban core, remains before us as a task of the housing element. And so I think we've ended up, for whatever reason is, placing the cart before the horse here. I think we ought to simply refine the language about the shall, the should to be changed to a shall. We should make it clear that the percentage of housing required on commercial parcels of over a half acre is fifty percent of the total building area. And the rest of it, we've lived with it this long. I think we can continue to live with the balance of the language in our current ordinance until we have completed the housing element process. That's going to be the defining document in which we identify our goals and objectives and implementation measures. And that's, after that's completed, we can look at further refining the language pertaining to waivers and options for any waivers if we want to grant them. It may be that the conclusion of the housing element process is we shouldn't be offering any waivers at all. That if someone is required to provide housing and the city is set that as its highest goal, is the production of housing, waivers might be best just taken off the table. I'm not going to come to that conclusion tonight, nor do I want to come to a conclusion about how best to implement this issue of waivers. I would rather put those things off until the housing element is done. And then we can take a look at this ordinance and other ordinances that pertain to housing in light of that housing element process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barnett.
Mr. Chair, if I can give you a couple of comments or observations. So being new to Sonoma, I can tell you that this language that we've had in our code has been there for twenty-odd years, let's say twenty years safely. You've had, what I can think of is three housing elements during that time, perhaps two, I can't remember. Well, clearly, the one that we're in, that's number five, and clearly, number four, which is thirteen, two thousand thirteen to twenty-one or something. Anyway, the point being is, yeah, I've mixed up all my dates. The point being is, I don't see a need to wait for the housing element to make amendments to this. I think we just need to make amendments that we could expand choices. If the goal is not to expand options available to the city in providing housing, then yeah, we don't need to make any changes to this language. Although, it would be my recommendation, we get rid of as much discretion as we can in the should normally be language, don't like it, never have, probably never will. So clearly, that needs to be removed. I think we could maybe do a better job of giving a better example to go to the point of Commissioner Barbos by saying this is what is meant by the shall be fifty percent. For example, if it's five thousand square feet of commercial, it shall be five thousand square feet of residential. That's really clear and easy to change that. So that's point number two. Point number three of three is, another option for the commission would be to eliminate, once we got that language figured out on the example, we could clearly remove some of those options like rehab, acquisition, conversion. We could get rid of the land dedication. We could perhaps just center or focus on doing an in lieu fee, because that was the genesis of why staff has come back to the commission to address that particular issue. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If I can just respond, Mr. Chair.
Correct, follow up.
Well, I mean, I think you're largely reiterating some of the things I've said, David, in that clearly focusing on the should be to the shals is important and clarifying the issue of what building area we're talking about that has to be dedicated to housing is key. With regard to the other items, as you've said, we could eliminate those at this point. The issue of the in lieu fee, though, brings up an interesting issue. I've been looking into it and you mentioned the Nexus study earlier. I think that I'm really not sure that any kind of study is necessary to establish an in lieu fee. There is a schedule that's a statewide schedule of estimated building costs in various regions and municipalities and locations in the state of California, which is the broadly accepted numbers of what it costs to build housing units. And I don't believe that it's going to take an Nexus study or anything even akin to that breadth of a project to simply decide. And I've been able to find some supporting court cases in support of this position that simply deciding upon a cost per square foot based on the regional housing construction and labor and land costs in this area provides us with the number we need to tell somebody how much they're going to have to contribute to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund in lieu of building the housing itself. And it really needs to be, as far as I'm concerned, as close to the actual cost of construction as that number can possibly be. And either relying on the past Nexus study, which wasn't done, as I recall, in support of the issue of an in lieu fee, but rather establishing a housing impact fee, I think is, at this point, unnecessary. And I would advocate that if we do include any language in here about an in lieu fee, that it be based on the schedule. I can't remember the exact name of what the schedule is cost, but it's a standardized schedule of construction cost calculation formulas that then get applied and based on the realities within any given jurisdiction. So I think that's certainly something we could consider, but I would want it to be an actual price of what it costs to build housing, not a, not some percentage of it or something that had been previously examined and determined in a study that's now four and five years old.
Just to respond, and I'll certainly ask for assistance from the city attorney. There's two types of fees. One would be a policy-based. It was my thought that this would be an AB sixteen hundred mitigation fee act study. But Jeff, if it's not an AB sixteen hundred mitigation fee, what would it be that we could take to the council to justify at market or at cost of the housing that Mr. Barnett, Vice Chair Barnett has suggested?
David, we're getting a lot of feedback from your audio. Do you know what that might be?
It was Larry's audio. I muted him.
Oh, okay, thanks.
All right, would it be helpful if I repeated, Jeff?
No, you're asking if it's not an AB sixteen hundred fee, a diff, what else might it be? I don't know. It could be a policy-driven fee, like the kind that we impose as a result of the of the residential impact fee. That was based on policy alone, as you know, and it might be justified under that basis, too. We'd have to take a look at it, basically, to determine what would be appropriate at the time that we look at it.
So for the commission tonight, they could forward a recommendation, assuming all other things are done. The language that we have presently constituted talks about an in lieu fee. Doesn't specify whether it's a policy or an AB sixteen hundred, just says an in lieu fee. So that seems to me, Jeff, that would be broad enough to forward to the council for them to then deliberate at some point in the future that they would adopt a fee resolution. It would be up to us to make a recommendation on how the council would do that.
Correct.
Okay. Yes, Commissioner Barbos, please.
Well, I am in large part in agreement with the points already made by Mr. Willers and Vice Chair Barnett. I just want to reiterate, though, that to adopt something that is this potentially both complicated and impactful before we've gotten into our housing element does seem kind of backwards. Acknowledging that the existing language should be, should become shall, and that we need to clarify that the fifty percent component is computed on the overall building volume or size. But I think if we go beyond that, we're creating issues that we haven't had a chance to fully look at. The in lieu fee is an example. We found ourselves in a situation with MacArthur Place where we actually did impose an in lieu fee. And the thing that made sense in that particular instance is it wasn't, it really didn't make that much sense to impose a housing requirement in the middle of a hotel. That, so, but in acknowledgement of the fact that there was a need for housing created both by the hotel and the historical ignoring of this housing requirement, that it was time to stop doing that. So what was before us was kind of created on the fly, if you will. And we ended up with that in lieu fee. I think we need to take a careful look at that. I think it would be a mistake to allow a developer who would otherwise be subject to the shall bill fifty percent to simply let them buy their way out of it without really looking at that carefully. Because as, just like moving it to another place, what you're effectively doing is you're reducing the amount of housing that's going to get built in the city. That if you have so much that could be allocated to each lot and you allow any lot to eliminate the housing with the idea that it's going somewhere else, it's already going somewhere else. You haven't added any new housing. You've restricted the housing. You've lost housing. So I think that we need to keep that in mind and just go a little slower on this overhaul of this whole issue. And just for the time being, clean up the shall and the percentage, as I've already discussed and others as well have spoken on this. So I just think this is, I appreciate the effort that's been put into this by staff. And we may end up using a lot of some of this language, but I think we need to go slow on this and look at the housing element and not start giving away housing opportunities in the city.
Thank you, Commissioner Barbos. Commissioner O'Neill, please.
First, I'm going to start with a question and then I've got some comments. How is assisted living counted? Whether it's, is it in a mixed use zone or a commercial zone? Do we call it residential or do we call it commercial?
My guess is, in other jurisdictions, I work, is commercial.
I don't think we've defined that. I think we have to because it gets bantered back and forth. And I know that developers will use that. And I think that that's something I'd like to see us pay some attention to and figure out how we're going to define that and make sure that it's incorporated in our code so that there's no ambiguity with that. Yeah, I couldn't find anything. All right, so a couple of comments. Commercial property vacancies are still way higher than residential vacancies. They're running around ten percent nationwide versus less than one percent for residential. Is that permanent? It's going to be around for a while. Hybrid work is here to stay. People will return to the office, but not as much. So there will be a lot more working from home, people like me. There's going to be a huge increase in need for commercial space, but it's all for outside what the city would want. There's going to be warehouses for distribution for e-commerce. There's going to be data centers. Again, these are all going to be outside the city limits. In the city limits, shops, restaurants, other small businesses will continue. Medical businesses, telehealth is increasing rapidly. So even though they might be increasing the needs, I think that they can do a lot of that with telehealth. So I'd say overall, I'm more in favor of the fifty percent housing. Shall provide fifty percent housing. I'm not really in favor of an in lieu fee. I'd rather that we require them to have the housing, but I will be open to discussion on that. And I agree with Vice Chair Barnett that it has to be some kind of concrete number that has its basis in true construction costs so that we're not putting any more confusion into how we're going to be calculating that number. So overall, I just look at the vacancy in commercial and I don't see it's going to be occupied as quickly as residential anytime in the next five years. So I think our focus really has to be on residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner O'Neill. Do I see, I see Larry Sand is up? Nope, okay.
Mr. McDonald's hand is up.
Ah, thank you, Mr. McDonald, please.
Hi, I agree with most of the comments with respect to in lieu fees. I think that we should have in instances like if a hospital is being proposed or a major expansion of a quasi-public facility or even like we had just a couple of months ago, a hotel making expansion. I think that we really do need an exception and a waiver, a mandatory waiver in certain circumstances and a mandatory in lieu fee. I also have always had a concern about projects where there were multiple lots. And I'm very concerned that we're not really looking at creating a minimum development area. For example, an office project and they're going to use a lot across the street, which could have a significant square footage. And then we're losing the opportunity for our ability to use other properties. So it's some, maybe it's a broader discussion, but I nonetheless think it's very important as we look at the mixed and commercial zones. So I don't know where that would fit into this. I believe the commissioners that talked about simplifying this right now for the moment, clarifying should to shall, creating less ambiguity with respect to the building area. I think those are all important and I'm looking forward to those changes to be made. So, but just keep in mind, I've always brought up the underutilization of properties. And so in the scenarios that we're talking about, we're talking about if it's a ten thousand square foot building, you know, five thousand has to be devoted to housing. But what happens if there's two lots and one lot is not being built on? So those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner McDonald.
Mr. Chair, if I could, just to help direct a conversation. Your commission could, as I said, take the language in paragraph three there. We could modify, there's no need to change the should normally be to shall because we've already done it. What we could do is modify that example or direct that staff prepare language such that it mean what Commissioner Barbos said, I think is what I'm hearing. We could craft some language, our city attorney could do that with myself. And then we could then say that you forward to the city council just those changes and that the paragraph three E be stricken in its entirety and forward that recommendation to the city council. And then they can take their look at it and decide to either go with the recommendation of the commission or choose to put that back in if that's something they're interested in doing, whether it's the land dedication fees, the offsite construction, the acquisition, rehab, a conversion or the in lieu fee. We can strike all of that out and the council may put it back in, who knows?
Okay.
Or alternatively, your commission could say, let's continue this and direct staff to come back with the language. That's certainly doable as well.
I don't want to jump before Commissioner Wyre. Do you want to speak or I have a couple of questions for either planning director store or our legal counsel, Mr. Walter?
Yeah, I'll weigh in to the point discussed about effectively reducing the amount of housing opportunity. You know, even if the city's housing trust fund receives a dollar for dollar contribution, then it becomes incumbent upon the city to actually do the project, right? I mean, it seems like it would be contributing to a lower likelihood that it actually happens. I agree with a lot of Larry's comments about putting the cart before the horse here. I think there's this deserving of a deeper and a more robust conversation about what our larger aims are here. And I'd like, I definitely want to see a cleaning up of the language tonight. You know, the shals and the sheds, I think we're all, we're exchanging shall for should. I think we're all in agreement there. And clearly defining the residential component as being fifty percent of the total area. And I think, I think beyond that, this is all deserving of a more robust discussion.
Thank you. A question for both Director Store and Mr. Walker. Do you foresee any significant liability for us to just continue this item?
I don't see any, I don't see any liability. It's a matter of direction or recommendation to the council at some point. There's no clock working against us here. You're certainly aware that there is interest within the development community for this to be addressed. And I think the commission expressed an interest in in looking at a fee to have some kind of standardization from the MacArthur Place scenario. Clearly, the options that we presented, they're all to be equal to what the cost of housing should be to be built. And one thing that I love about Sonoma's inclusionary housing ordinance is it gives an applicant one option and that's to build it on site. This clearly is an expansion of that, but only related to a residential or a mixed, it's going to be a commercial or a mixed use zone for that percentage that is required, not the regular or broad inclusionary housing. So if there's a continuance to have an additional discussion, it'd be helpful to have a focused comeback with staff kind of discussion.
Okay.
I agree with Mr. Store's perception of the need for haste. On the other hand, it's really important that we develop some kind of objective criteria that we use to determine what this residential component means. And particularly if we are going to engage in some kind of alternative or in lieu process. If we're going to impose, for example, a fee, it creates liability on the part of the city if at every commission meeting where the waiver is being considered and or an in lieu fee is being imposed, that there be some standards. This sort of ad hoc creation of fees is problematic and we should avoid that.
Okay. Vice Chair Barnett. You're muted.
I think at this point, I'd be most comfortable with our coming back. I forwarded to planning director Store and the city attorney some law cases that seem to pertain to the issue of setting fees on housing that I think may have an application to this question. And I think the city and the commission would benefit by continuing this item to another meeting when we can, having identified the issues that seem to be problematic, have, give staff more time to look at what the options are. Legal council on opportunity to look at what the options are and the commission more time to actually consider it in its fullness. Thank you.
The one comment that comes to my mind is one, a couple of thoughts. One is I don't like the idea of not making progress. I'm anxious to accomplish things. But in this particular case, I think a continuance does make sense. In terms of taking it far enough to some conclusion, I know that there was been some discussion about are we pushing the cart before the horse relative to the housing element? My question to my fellow commissioners or my director or our legal counsel is if we address the language, if we address the clarity on the fifty percent of what and we establish an in lieu fee with some sort of standard, are we tying the hands of the evolving housing element if we go that far? Could we not continue? In other words, can we not bring closure on this at a subsequent meeting? But you know, the housing element's going to be, what, another eight month process, if not longer? So I, I would like to accomplish something without necessarily tying the hands of the housing element. And then if we have some assurance that should we have some new revelation as the housing element evolves, then we can come back and tweak it again. But I'm inclined right now to continue it. But we also want to make sure we give definitive direction to staff in terms of what we'd like to see. Hopefully, the next time we bring it back to the commission.
Mr. Chair, what I'd suggest is that we continue it at least to the March meeting, date specific. And that way I don't have to re-advertise it and share some, you know, get some additional expense there. But if we're not ready for March, we can certainly continue it at the March meeting if we haven't been able to get to get that, whatever it is that the commission directs us to prepare. So that'd be the first act that you could do is continue it to March the 10th and then provide direction to us on those pieces that you want to have addressed. I think what we could do is, is look at the pieces that could make up language for what an in lieu fee could be made up of. I think Council Walter and I could look at that. The information has been provided to us by Vice Chair Barnett and report back. I think that's certainly doable for March. I will tell you that I won't be in attendance at March, at the March meeting, but that's not necessarily a requirement. I'll be attending my son's wedding.
I won't question your priorities.
Yeah, you know, our family thing.
You could always reschedule the commission meeting, Mr. Store, to accommodate your wedding plans so you could be here.
I'll do it in my tuxedo. How's that? I think first order of business, Mr. Chair, would be to continue and then provide his direction. Thank you.
Okay, let's, unless I get a sense of lack of support, I would suggest we do continue it. But let's have a discussion on what direction we can now give our staff for when we come back in March. Yes, Mr. Vice Chair Barnett?
Well, I would say that it's clear that the commission as a whole agrees that we don't have to have any extended discussions on changing the shoulds to shals. It appears that the discussion about the total building area being the component about which the fifty percent housing is assigned. So the only major issue for a discussion in a March discussion would be the in lieu fee and how it is arrived at and what we could apply. Because I do think the city attorney's recommendation to have a clear standard that we can apply would be helpful in many ways. So all that being said, I think I would make a motion to continue the item to the meeting of March tenth, is it? And at which time we will finalize hopefully the changes we recommend to the city council on this ordinance.
There are second. I see a second, okay?
Steve, you're muted, Steve. Excuse me, Commissioner Barbos, you're muted.
I'll second that, but I want to make a comment as well. I just think that when this, one of the things that we, we've got the shall, we've got the fifty percent. We're going to look at the in lieu fee. But I think what, when we're looking at the in lieu fee, we ought to look at under what circumstances is that, does that come into play? Is it something that can be elected by the developer? Is it something that only applies when it's not feasible to build the housing for one reason or another? And so that's a topic we haven't really delved into tonight, but we will have to get into that. But I think that the circumstances that would trigger or give the option for an in lieu fee need to be thought out and clearly.
Okay, any more comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, just one thing, just so I can get my eraser out. Is there any appetite on behalf of the commission, of the commission, to dispense with the land acquisition and the other options? It's just, let's just focus on the in lieu fee because I'm happy to strike it out if that's your direction. I'm just absent hearing that. I don't know whether that's something you want to, you know?
That's the intent of my motion.
And my second as well. Thank you. Commissioner McDonald.
Thank you. I, again, I think it's important, maybe moving forward, if we're going to continue this, is to look at the point I made before, which is if you have a property that's in a mixed use zone or a commercial zone and it's a small little business and they want to add six hundred square feet, what do we do? And I just want to reemphasize that because we've had instances where we've exempted things because it didn't make sense to require housing. So again, something to think about, the commission should think about and staff should think about, that it doesn't bog us down when we're trying to make decisions as a commission or as a city.
Yeah.
Chair, while under a question of Commissioner McDonald, we have, we're retaining the right in the construct that we have to allow for waivers. So in a case of a six hundred square foot, it clearly doesn't make a lot of to allow for waivers. So in a case of a six hundred square foot, it clearly doesn't make a lot of sense. The commission has that ability to waivers. Uh, I I'm perhaps missing the point. I apologize.
Uh, Commissioner McDonald, can you add clarity to your thought?
Maybe, maybe I misunderstood. Um, I thought it was um, uh, when we are going through this code or uh, uh, modification of the zoning code, that we were actually creating should to shall and making much more clear and much more precise with o- less flexibility, but if there is a, maybe I just didn't understand the code correctly, the zoning code, where if it's it's very clear that we've got um a three hundred square foot addition, we don't have to worry about the housing component either there's specifications.
Yeah, what what we have in there, Commissioner McDonald, is A, B, C, and D are still there. We're not changing any of that. That's the current provision where you can get the waivers, that we've been granting them over the years. What we've done is recommended an additional piece that were you not to get a waiver, you can go through one of these other options. And so what we've heard from the commission tonight is let's get rid of the items one, two, three. Uh, let's talk about number four only, and that will be the in lieu fee and how we craft that for some kind of action in the future.
Thank you so much. I I I'm sorry, I just didn't um understand that you're keeping the rest of the language. Thanks.
No problem. And my only comment before we kick go to a vote is uh, I think there is value. And I believe it was shared by Mister Willers. I think there's value in trying to keep an element of residential downtown, because I think it has a a way of kind of energizing the downtown area. And uh, I certainly would like us to keep that in mind as we go forward in our um evaluation and fine tooling of uh that this topic, so uh, that's my.
Can I make a suggestion based on what you just said? Uh, uh, just as a point of discussion. What about, what about not allowing an in lieu fee around the downtown area? Whatever we decide that, maybe that's the prod. Uh, you know, so you, so you can't fee out, you've got to build it on site. Um, that's an option. I don't know whether we could expand the geography of that, but if the intent as I've learned today, is that it was intended to try to focus increased density in the downtown area. Maybe you don't let somebody in Lufi out in that particular area. Just a thought. We can certainly talk about it in that in March.
I I think that's worth including and uh as part of our discussion, and if it uh survives our robust discussion. Great if it doesn't, uh, it'll be, I think, uh, appropriate to include it at this point. So not seeing or hearing any more comments, let's go ahead and have roll call, please.
Commissioner Barbo?
Yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Wirick?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barnett?
Hi.
And Chair Wellender?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much. Um. We're only into it an hour and thirteen minutes, so I think we could still hang on before we take a break. So let's uh move right into the next item, which would now be uh eight point one, which is the lot split on Malay. So uh, so we're talking about uh two, three, four Malay Street for a possible subdivision of almost a one acre, and at this point, I'd like to invite staff for the report.
Thank you, Chair Wellender and Planning Commissioners. I'd like to start off by uh, making a correction to the staff report. The actual uh current size of the parcel is one point three acres. And this is an application of Bear Flag Engineering to subdivide it into two lots. The property is developed with a single-family residence, detached garage, and two sheds. There are eighty-seven trees on the project site and the project uh uh, the frontage on the project is partially improved with curves and not improved with gutters or sidewalks. So uh, oh, parcel one would be a flag lot fronting uh, a driveway. It's proposed at point four, five, two acres. And the parcel two is proposed to be point eight, three acres. And the applicant has not yet prepared a plan to develop the parcels. And there are no uh plans to demolish the existing residence, detached garage, and two sheds on lot one at this time. The property's owned rural residential, and both parcels would have the potential to be developed in accordance with the applicable zoning requirements. The proposed two lot subdivision does not raise any issues of consistency with the property uh zoning in terms of use. The minimum lot size for this zoning district is twenty thousand square feet. Both parcels would exceed these standards. Therefore, the project meets the minimum lot size for the zoning district. The uh lot width and depth, depth are met. Uh, the current or the requirement for the minimum lot width is seventy-five feet and the minimum lot depth is a hundred. So both parcels comply with the lot size requirement. Lot, uh parcel one is a flag lot in front of the driveway. And parcel two would front Malay Street. In terms of floor area ratio, the proposed tentative parcel map would not create any issues of consistency with the floor area ratio. The uh zoning district has a requirement for a floor area ratio of point two. And both uh, the floor area ratio for both parcels would be determined at a later date and compliance would be ensured through the building permit process. Um, based on the proposed lot area of parcel one, just under five thousand square feet of floor area would be allowed. And uh, just uh, over seven thousand square feet would be allowed for parcel two. And site coverage for both parcels would be limited to the forty percent maximum through the building permit process. An arborist was, an arborist report was prepared for the project. Uh, included uh eighty-seven trees. Fifty-one trees are recommended for removal due to the development impacts or poor health or hazardous structures. Um, the tree committee reviewed the arborist report and recommended that oak trees be replaced a one-to-one ratio with a fifteen gallon size for each six inches of tree diameter removed. Tree replacement shall consist of a one-to-one ratio with a fifteen gallon size for all non-oak tree species. And there were three um species that were approved with no or recommended with no um replacement, and that's the glossy privet red gum, red gum in Monterey pine. So if all thirty-eight trees recommended to be reviewed, to remove, to be removed, uh, that would yield, um, sorry, thirteen each fifteen gallon replacement ratio, not a hundred and thirty-four. So there are um, uh, thirteen trees that may not be preservable depending on the future uh, footprints of the structures. And if they were all removed, it would yield eighteen each fifteen gallon replacement ratio for the trees. There are certain findings this commission must make in order to approve an application for a tentative parcel map. With regard, with regards to the Quimby Act fees, at the subdivider's expense, an appraisal of the property was provided by a qualified real estate appraiser, approved by the city, whose appraisal was found reasonable and accepted by the city. So a fair market value was determined by mutual agreement of the city and the subdivider in the amount of twenty-six thousand eight hundred dollars. So staff's recommending this commission approve a resolution authorizing the tentative parcel map to subdivide the property into two lots, subject to findings and conditions of approval. And that concludes staff's report. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Wendy. Uh, any uh questions for staff? Uh, Vice Chair Barnett, please, go ahead.
Uh, my primary question is, and this is perhaps a question that can be answered by Planning Director Store. Once this lot split is approved, are either or both of these lots then uh uh then eligible under SB nine for a further split in construction of additional structure?
I have to go back and uh, maybe Christina can help here, but I do know that you can't uh, subdivide it if it's been involved in a lot split. I'll, let me check the language on that. But my, my initial thought is the answer is yes, but I need to check the language. I know there's a prohibition on subsequent splits, but let me check on that.
When you said yes. I can't see why not.
So you're saying, yes, they 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 would be eligible under SB nine for a further lot split?
My first read, my first read is yes.
Is it that one of the zoning districts where SB nine applies?
Well, yeah, I mean, it'd only be applicable there.
Sorry, everyone, I cannot get on the meeting.
Vice Chair Barnett, let me check on the language. I think my my first thought is that, yes, they would be eligible to then have the two units on each of the lots. But as far as later subdividing again, that part I'm not sure about. So in other words, you've got two lots. Can they then subdivide and create even more lots? I think each of the two resultant lots here could each have two lots on each of them per S- SB nine. If it's a, yeah, and it is a, it is a residentially zoned property.
Well, that was my question. Thank you.
Uh, Commissioner McDonald.
Yes, thank you. Um, I have a question for staff as it relates to the true report and the um, the utility. Um, I noted in the um subdivision, uh, there is a an eighteen-foot wide drive with necessary based on the the fire department. Um, a portion of that extends off-site onto the adjoining property uh, properties um through an easement. Um, I noticed the tree study showed a number of trees uh on the actual development site, but it doesn't really look at off-site trees that would be impacted by um uh, the construction of a a driveway. So maybe you could answer those questions for me. Thanks.
I um I'm gonna try to pull up the parcel map here.
Hi.
Usually the um arborist report, uh, arborist reviews the um any trees that are in the general vicinity of the property that would have a negative impact if on the which the development would have a negative impact on. So um were you out on the site and saw trees in the easement area that was not addressed in the arborist report?
Well, it it looked like there was vegetation. I'm not quite sure if it was trees or uh, that it was very clear that it was, you know, outside of the um, the 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 lot line. Um, it just, it appeared to me that um, this extension of the driveway, which I think has to be eighteen feet. Why?
The driveway is twenty feet.
Oh, twenty feet. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So there's, there's three and a half feet of easement to combat, accommodate that driveway. It just wasn't clear to me that the 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 trees along the property line were, were not in that easement area. Um, once the the uh driveways actually extended um to the twenty foot, what what the result is going to be on the other side of the sub uh, the the lots that we're um subdividing, um, it, there's an impact to um the property, the easement is for the driveway.
Um, well, I think that maybe the um applicant could address uh, would have a better idea if there are actual trees along that uh eastern property line where the easement is. And while um while we're going out to the public comment, I'll look and try to pull up the tree uh map.
Yeah, there's gotta be, there's gotta be, because usually when you have a a subdivision map, it like, how's the outline of like the major vegetation? It just shows you that there's vegetation and 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 this particular um subdivision, it shows the um, the topography and the adjoining properties, but it doesn't show any vegetation, so. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Okay, seeing none. Uh, is the applicant up uh present and uh wishing to speak?
Yes, I'm promoting both the applicant and the engineer.
Very good.
There we go.
Good evening.
Well, good evening.
I am the applicant, along with my wife Shannon is here, and we have Chad, who is our engineer. Uh, I could answer that question from the commissioner as far as the tree and vegetation. They are not, um, there's nothing that was protected by the arborist in that area where the fire truck turnaround is. Um, but obviously Wendy can pull up the plans, uh, while we're discussing this. Um. Should I make a brief statement or what would you like to hear?
Feel free. This is your opportunity to sell us.
So uh, we've resided next door adjacent to this property at nine eight five Friar Creek Drive uh since two thousand ten. So um, we're very familiar with the neighborhood. We had um built a relationship with the previous owner of that property and um asked her that if she ever uh felt like she was looking to sell the property, that she would consult with us. And fortunately, when she did decide in uh September of two thousand ten, um, we were able to, excuse me, two thousand twenty. We were able to come to an agreement and purchase that property, um, which closed in November of of two thousand twenty. Uh, at that point, we hired Chad Mall from Bear Flag Engineering to help us understand uh the city requirements, uh, what we could do with the property. Um, once he surveyed it, we did that and then uh started working with Wendy at the city to come up with a subdivision plan uh that's been presented to you. Um, we've worked with her over the last year or so, and Chad taken all the steps necessary to get to this point, uh, completed all the environmental assessments, et cetera. Um, we have not, as Wendy mentioned, uh, submitted any building plans. We don't have uh, a great idea on what we're going to do. Uh, hopefully, once we have this approval, um, it depends upon cost, obviously, and some other factors. Um, and that's what we have here today.
Very good. Would your engineer like to speak?
Yes, please. Uh, thank you, uh, commissioners, uh, for listening to our uh project. So uh, I'm Chad Mall with Bear Flag Engineering, um, project civil engineer. Um, it's been mentioned before that we are proposing a single lot subdivision uh to create a new lot in the back portion or the north portion of the uh existing property. Um, the property sizes, it will be, you know, approximately a half acre and, you know, tens of an acre. And um, you know, we already discussed that architectural designs, we're not going to be provided at this time. Um, the um, it's not part of this project. But um, one point of clarification, we proposed a sixteen-foot wide asphalt driveway. Um, it is, and that was reviewed by fire. Um, the um it will, and so it's sixteen feet wide asphalt, and then it has uh gravel shoulders on on the outside of it. Um, it is majority, the majority of it is within the project property, a small portion. So twelve feet is on our side, four feet is within an existing easement. Um, that's shared with the neighbor. The neighbor has a reciprocal easement on our project as well. Um, so they will be, then the the parcel to the east will also be able to use our uh, the the driveway that's constructed. And uh, we, we did provide a fire department turnaround at the end um to, you know, per fire code. Um, we completed a preliminary utility design, water, sewer, drainage, dry utility services. They're all feasible. They're all able to be provided to the lots. Um, drainage for our property um will be directed to bio-retention planters. And uh, the goal with that is to put as much rainfall back into the ground as possible. Uh, but when we have really large storm events like we did in October, uh, excess runoff will go out towards Friar Creek Drive. There's existing drainage infrastructure on the project side of uh the frontage of our property, which we would direct uh runoff to. That actually heads to the west uh through existing storm drains to the creek uh just in the backyards. to the creek, just in the backyards of our neighbors. It's important to note, I think, that probably about two hundred to three hundred feet east of our project, there's a high point in Malay, and drainage on the east of that heads in a different watershed, which heads towards Newcombe, heads towards Broadway. We are not part of that watershed. So our watershed heads opposite and over to the creek to the west. So I've spoken to several of the neighbors, and it's definitely the goal of our project team to, you know, incorporate feedback from the neighbors. One item that was expressed by multiple neighbors was the fact that they prefer and enjoy the fact that they don't have sidewalks. Malay currently does not have sidewalks on either side of the road. Friar Creek Drive has a sidewalk on only one side, and it's the opposite side of our project. So on, up on the west side of Friar Creek Drive, which turns kind of on our side, it's curb and gutter. It's our goal and our wish to kind of mimic that and stay in and be consistent with that, with the neighborhood. And so I'm not sure if I can do this at this moment, but condition eleven G says it requests installing curb gutter and sidewalk. It would be our request to have sidewalk removed from that condition of approval, so that we can stay consistent with the neighborhood. Yeah, our project is a small and simple project. We've jumped through hoops with different soils review, arborists, with biological reviews. Our goal is to minimize impact as much as possible, and I hope you will review and hopefully ultimately approve our request for subdivision. So thank you, and we're available if you guys have any questions.
Thank you. Do any of my commissioners have questions for the applicant and engineer?
Chair Wellender, can I?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead. Commissioner Chair Wellender. Wendy, I seem to recall in the conditions of approval, correct me please if I'm wrong, that the condition that was just discussed about the curb veteran sidewalk, does it not say that as determined by the public works director, so the language could stay, and that at some subsequent time, the public works director could determine whether they want a curb veteran sidewalk, require all three or just one of the three or two of the three?
The normal process is if the applicant or the engineer does not intend on installing the sidewalk, that they would apply for a deferred improvement agreement, and that would be reviewed by the city engineer, and he or she would ultimately make the decision as to whether or not to grant the deferred improvement agreement.
So at this point, we would recommend that the language stay in its current form, and then allow that discretion by the public works director at some subsequent time?
Right.
Thank you.
And then, in addition, I pulled up a Google Earth photograph, and here is the subject site, and here's the easement area. And there's really not a lot of trees in this area. There may be one here. And if the commission was concerned about the driveway damaging that tree, we could include a condition that that tree be protected.
Okay.
This is Christine. Going back to the other issue, on number eleven, it does say, this is about the sidewalk, the following shall be required as deemed necessary by the public works department city engineer.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for the applicant or engineer? I'm seeing none. So at this time, I want to say thank you to both, and I'm going to open it up to the public for comment.
Chair Wellender, Lori, I thought I saw a hand go up for a moment, but it went back down. So let's, here we. Okay, we're getting some folks that would like to speak. So we'll go ahead and start with Rose. Rose, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Fabulous. Hello, my name is Rose Chirkin, and I live on Friar Creek with my husband, Victor. We have lived here for, since 2008. So we would have a vested interest in what happens in the community as well. And I cannot think of a better couple to oversee this and to make sure that it's done right. They, you know, obviously want to keep it very nice, because it is in their neighborhood too. So I have no doubt that they will do it the right way and make it absolutely a wonderful addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Chair Wellender, I don't, I don't see any other members of the public raising their hands.
Okay.
I do. I do see a couple more people now. Let's see. Daniel and Chair, you can go ahead and unmute yourself and speak.
Hi there. So can you all hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
So I live at one four four down the street, and I thought I would start by just describing Malay Street. It's a very different environment than almost anywhere else in Sonoma. It's very much a slice of the country. And I have had, you know, we've, twenty of us have shown up at these meetings to say, we don't want to talk about curb, you know, gutter and sidewalk ever again. And the commissioners have said, okay, we promise we will never bring up that, you know, those phrases when you guys do building here. And yet, here we are again, talking about curb gutter and sidewalk. So people come to this street because it's a beautiful old piece of country. You know, people walk on this street with their dogs, and they come, you know, all over town. This is where they come if they want to have a slice of the country. So that is a little preamble to, you know, my anxiety, I guess, about what's happening down at the corner of that beautiful, big, you know, one and a third acre lot. And they're subdividing it, you know, and I certainly, you know, want to encourage people to, you know, love and enjoy their property. But I'm wondering what the ramifications are of subdividing it. And then it sounds like even subdividing the subdividing it. So I would hate to see, you know, a house and a law and a granny unit put on each of those four subdivisions of subdivisions. And so subdividing it without knowing where it's going is, is not reassuring to me in terms of, you know, saying, oh, sure, go ahead. Okay, well, let's just subdivide it. What's, you know, what's the worst that can happen? You know, it's like, and interesting in the context of the broader picture of housing in Sonoma that preamble, you know, that led up to this conversation, where we're like, we're really trying to get a lot of housing in Sonoma. And there are places for that, and I would, you know, love to see that happening in the, in the high density zone and not in the rural residential of Malay Street. So that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you, Daniel.
And Lauren, Lori Hayes-McCarthy would like to speak. Go ahead.
Hi, this is Lori Hayes-McCarthy. I live next to Shannon and her husband at two twenty four Malay. And I just wanted to say, when you did the picture of the trees, I just haven't been up there to cut some of those down. So some of that, that won't be a problem. But also, I just wondered, subdividing of subdividing, if that happened, what area of the road, I mean, they have the road there now, but what would that do to that, my easement, or our easement, if they were to subdivide? I've had the property for, since nineteen forty six. My great uncle had it, and it came down through the generations, and somebody in our family have always lived in that house. It's more like a retirement home. So I worry that it becomes just too many people in that little area. Is that a problem? Will that be a problem after I go and the kids have the property?
What about your well?
Yeah. Can that be answered?
I can make a comment about SB nine and how that would relate. So in our SB, I'm Christina Tierney, I'm the associate planner, by the way, or the other associate planner. Apologies for my face not being on Zoom. Our SB nine ordinance attempts, I believe, does address this issue. We have specific road widths that are included based on the number of units. And so that, that language was recommended by the fire marshal. So from a health and safety perspective, there are standards as to how many units could be in, on that parcel based on the road width.
Thank you.
Okay.
Chair Wellender, I don't see any other members wanting to speak.
Okay. Then with that, I will bring it then back, close the public portion of the hearing, and bring it back to my fellow commissioners for.
Sorry, Commissioner Wellender, right after I said that, a couple more hands popped up. So I don't know if you'd like to open it back up?
Keep it open for the public. Go ahead.
So Lori Hayes-McCarthy would like to continue her conversation, I believe. Can I allow her to speak some more?
Sure.
All right, Lori.
Hi, I'm again. I just wanted to ask a question about my well. I'm on well water. And with all the building that will be done in the future, will that do anything to my well? Will the water still be there? Does anybody know?
Well, through the chair, I mean, that's a hundred million dollar question, right? The new, the development on the, the new lot will be hooked up to city water, but there's always the potential that your well will run dry.
Because of the, because of the digging?
Right. Does anybody else?
Not because of the digging, just at some point in the future. This house, the construction is going to be on the surface. It's not going to go down to the groundwater table.
Okay, okay, very good. Anything else, Michael? No. Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. So let's give it three seconds. And if I don't see any more hands raised, we'll go ahead and close it. So one, two, three. I really don't see any more hands raised, Chair Wellender.
Okay, with that, I will once again try to close the public portion of this and open it up to my fellow commissioners for discussion and possible action. So, ah, yes, Commissioner O'Neill, please.
I'll go first. Nice to see all of you on this format. And I have to say that I think that this project makes sense. And I think that the way that they're approaching it, I don't worry so much about this project being a lot split, and then through SB nine being a further lot split, because as the guidelines we proposed for handling SB nine, we said that you could only have eight hundred square, square feet per unit. So you'd be talking about duplexes in an area where, while I don't think it'd be bad to have duplexes, I think this is going to be more an area of luxury homes, of expensive homes. I don't see SB nine necessarily coming in here. But if it does, I'm not worried about it. Wendy, you said you've got water for this, city water for the development?
Yeah.
Okay.
They'll be able to apply for that.
Will the neighbor's well ever run dry? I worry about that myself. I'm on a well. We don't know. If it does, we have to dig another one. But it won't have anything to do with the construction on this site. And if they're not pulling from that aquifer, that's not going to be an issue. So overall, I think that keeping that item eleven in there and letting the public works department determine whether or not it's necessary to have sidewalks is the right way to handle that. So I'm, I'll continue to listen to my fellow commissioners, but I would be in support of this.
Thank you very much, Commissioner O'Neill. Mr. Commissioner McDonald, please.
Thank you very much. I wanted to share my opinion of the subdivision. I think I don't have an issue with it. I think it is important that we look at each one of these lots strategically to add housing to our housing stock. I also support this project, except I don't understand where the existing houses are in relationship to what I'm observing to be a setback. So I'm just hoping that staff can assure me that there's no variance that would theoretically be necessary if a small extension or expansion of the houses that exist right now occur. So maybe you could shed some light on that. But otherwise, I don't have an issue with this part.
Okay. Staff, it can be noodling on that for a while, and maybe they'll come back regarding that setback. And yes, Vice Chair Barnett?
I've got a couple of, I've got a question, and then a couple of comments. This parcel is zoned rural residential, and as are a number of the other parcels on Malay Street. I remember when Malay was brought in to the city from its county designation, and it was quite a involved conversation because of the rather unique qualities of Malay Street, which has included the absence of sidewalks. And so I would hope that the consideration of this project would continue to treat Malay in the somewhat unique fashion it has been for all these years. My question has to do with the rural residential designation, and I'm assuming from the answer from Planning Director Storer about SB nine, that rural residential parcels are equally applicable to SB nine. And I just want to confirm that because I'm not really sure where in the city we have any more or other rural residential designations. That was really a county zoning designation that we inherited and continued. But I don't think we have rural residential in general anywhere else in the city, but I may be wrong. My question is, does SB nine apply to rural residential parcels? And if the answer to that is yes, I just want to point out that once these parcels are subdivided, it would technically allow for the creation of eight residential units on these, on this currently single parcel. That each subdivided parcel we would approve tonight could be further subdivided, and up to four units could be created on those then further subdivided lots. And I just put that out there because it's simply the reality that we're working with in the state law at present. It's not something other than the issues that we've identified in the city's ordinance governing SB nine lots. It's something that we can affect in a, in a particularly dramatic way. The entitlements that SB nine grants are pretty ironclad and essentially subordinate most of the other provisions of the land use, regulations pertaining to setbacks and so forth that we would normally have in any zoning district. So I just want to bring that to the attention of everybody who's listening. It's very challenging, and I'm not really sure what the effect would be. I'd be a bit more reassured on this if there actually was a development plan that had been presented. I sort of, I feel a little less comfortable not knowing what it is that's going to happen here. I think Sheila's comment about what's likely to happen is probably true. And Malay Street has many large houses and expensive houses, but not exclusively because it's such an old neighborhood. And, and so it also has what I refer to as rural residential, almost cottage structures on it, as exists on this existing. almost cottage structures on it, as exists on this existing parcel now. So it's hard to say exactly what would happen. But the development potential is definitely there. And SB nine is creating a higher unit and density on this parcel than than any than the city can control. And I just want to make that point. So if David or Christina or someone can answer my question about rural residential specifically, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I can chime in. So there are four zoning.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, look, yes, back looking at your packet tonight. On the next item, if you look at nineteen point four, one point oh, one, zero, under the purpose and land use zoning and density, you'll see that the rural residential district is listed as one of those where SB nine units can be developed. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, very good. Commissioner Barbos.
I support this project. I I think that it's in keeping with the historic use of the properties on that street. But in response to the concerns raised by neighbors and have just been discussed, I would just encourage the neighbors who want to understand more about this, what is referred to as SB nine, to just stay tuned because we're going to be looking at the ordinance for implementation of that in the city as our next item here tonight. But it does allow state, this was imposed by state law, not something that, but we are implementing it in keeping with the state law.
Thank you, Mr. Barbos. Associate Planner Wendy, did you have vice, did you want to speak up for?
Chair, I wanted to respond to Commissioner McDonald's request about the setback. So the current setback back for met for the existing residents. And it could be expanded upon and meet the required side yard setback requirement. So that answers the question.
Thank you. Commissioner Wierich, please.
Yeah, I want to say that I support the project. I think it makes sense. Seems like a step towards adding some housing units to our stock here, even though there's nothing proposed yet. My evaluations has been responsibly undertaken and I appreciate all the analysis that's gone into it. I'm comfortable with the condition number eleven is written in that it provides some flexibility as the imposition of a requirement to install sidewalks if it's appropriate. Those are my comments.
Very good. Anyone else? Which I guess leaves me and I too do support the project. One clarification for the engineer. The Arbor's report, the biological assessment and the soils were in the project's best interest, not just hoops that we required. So with that said, I believe this is headed in a good direction. So at this point, I have nothing else to add. And I would welcome a motion if we can craft one.
I'll make a motion to approve this project subject to the conditions of approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Barbos?
Yes.
Commissioner McDonald?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner O'Neill?
Yes.
Commissioner Wierich?
Muted. Yeah, yes.
I'll take that as a yes.
Yes.
Vice Chair Barnett?
Aye.
And Chair Wellender?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the clock says we're tipping close to eight o'clock. So I have to gavel. Let's take a five minute break.
Hi, Christina. Can you hear me? I'm Bob. Oh, can you hear me, Christina?
I can hear you, Bob.
Oh, okay, good. Well.
No, I'm Sheila. I'm not Christina.
I have just a question. I I watched the TV as well as watched our streaming video. It seems to me that the TV is frozen. Maybe it hasn't really moved or changed. It's been frozen. Maybe it's just my TV or my access to the cable. But I just want to make sure it's, you know, accessible to the public and being recorded. So.
Yes, it's being recorded. I know that there have been some issues with the TV station with some things lately. But I'll relay this information to Bob Taylor.
Great, okay, it it's just it's just frozen, but as long as it's being recorded. Thanks.
Wendy, did you do anything to my settings?
No.
It's just worked out the twenty fifth time and restarting my computer and updates.
Hey, I came back as Matt Wierich.
Good, that's good.
Wait, can I get the look right? I can't do it like you can, Matt.
You need you need a little better shape going on in that hat or she like, I can help you with that.
Well, this one is a little beat up. It's not mine. It's not mine.
It's got some salt on it, huh? That's okay.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, salt's the least worrying thing, worrisome thing on it.
Is this the new the new dress for the commissioner?
Hey, we're trying to embrace our agregagarian roots.
That's good. That's good. I like it.
Ron, you're muted.
Good. Let's bring this some back to some level of appropriate discussion for a commission besides hats. So anyway, so now we're on to our last agenda is item eight point three, which is to discuss considering take possible actions on recommending to the city council the SB nine. So with that, we'd love to have a brief staff report.
Very brief. Yeah, the this is an extension of our ongoing discussion on SB nine. As we discussed in January, we would be bringing moving forward with the regular ordinance, our urgency ordinance for everyone's memory was adopted by city council on December fifteenth. There are very few changes between what was approved at the council and the draft. That's before the planning commission tonight. They're all related to recommendations that the commission made to staff in January, largely related to the floor area ratio and allowing for the size of the units to be larger than eight hundred square feet if certain conditions related to fourth floor area ratio were met. And also clarifying that units less than eight hundred square foot feet were also allowed. Well, that's it. Are there questions?
Very good. Any questions for staff from the commissioners? Yes, Vice Chair Barnier.
Good evening. Christina, Bill Willers has raised an interesting point in a letter I saw pertaining to this addition of language about a six foot separation between buildings. And it appears that this would is intended to apply to structures that are not stacked one on another, nor with a common wall between them. And it would imply that that it would remove the opportunity for stacked strat stacked units or a common wall duplex. Can you comment on that?
Yeah, so for just so that we're all talking about the same thing. This is under the objective development standards, chapter nineteen forty one, one fifty. And I can share my screen. And I'm going to have to ask our city attorney Jeff Walters to to chime in as well. But in the objective development standards, just so we're all on the same page about what we're looking at, there are general requirements about the units allowable uses, minimum lot sizes, height, site coverage setbacks. And what we're talking about is under building form. So under seven building form B, dwelling units in a two unit residential development shall have separate exterior exterior entries facing the street. And any part of the building of one unit may not be closer than six feet to the nearest part of the other dwelling building. So this isn't about the units. It's about the two buildings. And I believe this comes from our zoning code, which determines that an attached structure is a building that is within six feet. So if it's within six feet, we would consider them to be attached. Six feet or more, then it would be a detached structure.
Okay, so let me see if I understand this correctly.
So we're talking about two different structures, not a building with two units, that the two units can't be attached. That's how I'm reading it anyway.
Okay. Well, I think that the the language as it's proposed is ambiguous and which is why it's raised with a question. And and maybe it's a matter of of how we settle on terminology, which is that this would assume that there is an original building on a site that has been subdivided. And so.
Or not.
Well.
I'm reading this as the two, the two buildings need to be separated.
Well, I understand the problem is, do we have a definition of building?
We we do in our zoning code.
Okay, and does our definition of building distinguish between a quote unquote duplex versus any other type of building?
Let's check to make sure first that there isn't a specific definition in our SB nine ordinance.
You you see what I'm getting at? I just don't want.
I see what the confusion is. I think we can just delete that one word unit and that would probably clarify it. And Jeff, please chime in if I'm going off the rails.
Yeah.
Go ahead. We're confusing ADUs with JADUs with two unit developments. And that it's actually not very clear just distinguishing those three types of of additional structures are now allowed to be built on a single family residential lot. I think that the SB nine concept is actually
I think that the SB9 concept is actually to develop two separate detached units. That's the entire concept, because with the ADU ordinance, you can create a second unit in an attached garage, for example. Um, and you also can create obviously a GADU in an upstairs bedroom of an existing, uh, single-family residence. Uh, so the, the concept of the SB9 really is to create a separate structure, um, that is apart from and not attached to these existing home. I'm trying to recall, I don't think, uh, if you haven't subdivided the property and you're applying for permission to develop an SB9 second unit where there's an existing home, the, the second unit remains owned by the owners of the lot. That you, I don't think you can convey it separately, but I could be wrong about that.
And didn't we prohibit ADUs to simplify? Yeah, so 1941-05-0, new accessory dwelling units and new junior accessory dwelling units are not permitted.
Well, I don't know what that means, because they, I believe they have to be permitted by your own ADU ordinance, do they not?
Um, well, this is what our SB9 ordinance says. So maximum number of units, a two-unit residential development shall include no more than two dwelling units on a single parcel, namely, a development that proposes no more than two units or proposes to add one new unit to one existing unit. New dwelling units proposed as part of the two dwelling, a two-unit residential development must be primary dwelling units. New accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units are not prohibited. Pardon me while I shut the door for my dog.
Yeah, and I think that means they're not permitted to be processed under the SB9 process. And that you cannot, if you have a sec, if you actually get an SB9 permission to build two or to add one unit uh, to a single-family lot, you then do not get on top of that an ADU or a JADU. I think that's what that means.
That you, that I think that that was the intent for sure, and the, the reason for everyone, it wasn't to prohibit units. It's that ADUs have their own separate process and standards and other state laws that apply to that.
You couldn't, yeah, but you can't piggyback. You can't get an SB9 two-unit project approved and then come back later or in tandem also obtain approval for an ADU or a JADU on that same parcel.
Correct. So I'm going back down to seven.
Christina, while you do that.
I think of stacking is not, uh, consistent with the notion of what SB9 is all about. SB9 is not about building a second unit on top of an existing, uh, home, I do believe. Um, I've not seen that portrayed as in one of the scenarios that SB9 contemplates.
Christina, could you answer the question, um, why is it six feet? Why is it not five feet? Why is it not seven feet? I'm not quite sure I understand why six feet has been picked, because my other thought would be, is it altogether bad about maybe just deleting that sentence?
So it goes back to our definition of a detached accessories for a detached structure. And six feet of open sky is our current standard for setbacks and, um, let me, Wendy, do you know what the code, that code section where it has the open sky?
Yeah, we might want to introduce some new terms and definitions, which would be to introduce the term akin to primary structure. In other words, a, a building that contains two duplexes would be a primary structure. An original home is a primary structure. Um, I think the difficulty is here is that we're using, we're using the term building to refer to something, but the, but a building, um, could mean an individual unit in a duplex as opposed to the structure, the primary structure as a, as a whole, which contains two units. In other words, this is where the, to me, part of the ambiguity is coming up. If I understand the intent of this, you're saying that a primary structure containing two units needs to be at least six feet away from another primary structure of either one or two units. Am I right? In other words, the point is, is that, that these two primary structures that might contain duplexes need to be at least six feet apart, although I remember something about, about there needing to be at least 10 feet of space between the primary buildings. There was, there was some element of distance between the buildings, but maybe I'm confusing that with the ADU requirement, which was for 10 feet of distance from a, from a, uh, of the primary structure.
Yeah, I'm checking the, um, I'm checking SB9 and appreciate everyone's close attention to the language.
It seems to me, Mr. Chair, that that language could be modified where the piece where it begins, where it ends, and any part of the building, that could be stricken, and I think the issue is over. In other words, we just have the first piece, piece that talks about separate exterior entry spacing the street, period. I don't know why we have to have six feet of separation. We just saw the language that talks about, uh, six feet of separation from an accessory structure to a main dwelling unit. I don't know why we have to even discuss it.
Last is more. If we're okay with striking that, I, I take no exception to that.
Christina, can you see a reason why we would need to have that last part of the sentence?
The only thing I would say is I'd want to check with the fire marshal and see if there were any issues with that, but I don't believe there are. And our, our, that's six feet, that's for an accessory structure.
Well, in the interest of, uh, moving forward, why don't we go ahead and strike it at this point? And then if it should prove to be problematic with the, uh, fire code, then, uh, that will override our desire to simplify.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, we, we probably should conclude our, uh, internal discussion, open it to the public and then we can have deliberation about that.
I appreciate that, yes, so we'll, uh, do that. At this time, I'd like to open up the public for, uh, the, the hearing to the public for an opportunity to render comment regarding this item, so. Wendy, do we have any takers?
Yes, uh, Bill Willers would like to speak. Go ahead, Bill.
Mr. Mr. Willers, welcome again.
Thank you, Chair Wellender, members of the commission, and I think it's a great thing that we have an almost ordinance to pass on to the city council and, um, and appreciate all the work that's gone in to doing this. The reason, the reason I raised this issue is because I read codes for a living, as part of my living. And when I read this, it meant to me that I could not build two, that I cannot build a joined duplex, a common wall duplex. It read to me that I needed to build two separate buildings separated by six feet. And I do not believe that that's the, um, intention of SB9. In fact, SB9 has a section, um, subdivision G that says, "An application shall not be rejected solely because it proposes adjacent or connected structures, provided that the structures meet building code safety standards and are sufficient to allow separate conveyance." What that essentially means is that you can draw a property line through them. A townhouse is a perfect example. It has a common wall, commonly two, um, independent units, but it can, they can be separately, um, conveyed. A condominium is essentially the same thing. A condominium can be a duplex. Condominium can be two stacked structures, in other words, one unit below another. And the, and the property line there is defined by air, which is the property line of the floor or the ceiling, um, floor of one unit, ceiling of the other. It's clear to me that SB9 would allow someone to subdivide their single-family home into two units. And the way that that can be accomplished is by modifying the interior to be fire-safe for the separation of structures. So I would just recommend that we, that that language be taken out. Um, the building code provides for, um, assemblies that separate buildings from each other, even though they're joined. Um, and, and the building code will take care of that. And also, I think if we have common language in our code that addresses separations of buildings, that would still apply to these, um, a- at a general level, that would still apply to the SB9 buildings as well. So that's the reason I raised this issue, but thanks a lot.
Thank you, Mr. Willers. Wendy, is there anyone else that would like to speak?
Yes, Callum Weeks would like to speak.
Very good. Callum, welcome.
Good evening, Chair Wellender, commissioners and staff. Um, I would just like to take a quick moment to, you know, say, if you are in, you know, if you are committed to building more housing and, and, you know, in fact, building more affordable housing, then I would ask you to actually give serious consideration to either reducing or waiving altogether, that would be preferable, um, the impact fees for SB9 units. Um, most construction costs are obviously outside the city's control, but, you know, reducing impact fees is, is one way that, you know, you as a planning commission and, and, you know, collectively as a city can really demonstrate your commitment to building new housing. And I, I would also relatedly like to just mention for you, um, it's a little bit of a tangent, but in, uh, during the 2019-2020 session, uh, Assemblyman Grayson actually introduced a bill that would have established a housing cost reduction incentive program. In a nutshell, what it would have done is, is, you know, require that department or HCD to provide grants to applicants and amount, uh, uh, equal to 50% of the amount of development impact fees waived or reduced for a qualified rental housing project. And the reason why I bring that up, um, in this public comment is because, um, Assemblyman Grayson is actually going to be reintroducing that bill. And I felt it was appropriate to actually couple that to my comments about waiving impact fees so that you might feel more comfortable in giving serious consideration to that. Granted, the bill has not been, you know, put into law yet. I mean, it hasn't been introduced. It's actually expected the next day or so. But it's just something to keep in the back of your mind when you make these considerations. You know, removing or waiving impact fees is, is becoming more and more popular um, as an option to help facilitate and spur more affordable housing. So I would just really ask that you give that serious consideration and, um, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate your service.
Thank you very much, Callum.
Mr. Chair, if I can ask a question of the speaker, uh, if he's still available to answer it. I'm unclear as to which specific impact fee is being referred to. We, as I've mentioned before, uh, as a city do not have quote-unquote impact fees per se. There may be one or two. We have fees for plan check, we have fees for water connection. We do not have what other jurisdictions have, such as a traffic impact fee that relates. We don't have a fire impact fee, other than it's not the city's, it may be somebody else's. Uh, another jurisdiction, if you will, or district. So I was wondering if Callum, you could specifically tell us which impact fee the city of Sonoma has and your interest in having waived this. Thank you.
Uh, yeah, thanks for that information, David. To, to be honest, uh, you know, my capacity to, um, you know, review and, and be knowledgeable of, you know, all nine jurisdictions, uh, to the T is, is challenging at best. So I, I, you know, I was operating on the assumption that there was, you know, more likely than not, um, probably some sort of impact fee that could be waived, um, that would effectively help, um, increase the feasibility of these projects. If that's not the case, then I guess it's a moot point, but I felt compelled to raise it, because it is, again, a very common approach these days to, um, spurring affordable housing.
Very good. Thank you for the clarity.
Fair Wellender, there's no other members of the public that have their hand up.
Very good, then. I will not wait. I will close the public portion of this item, bring it back to my fellow commissioners for discussion and some possible action. So I know I do not have shy commissioners. Commissioner Barbos, thank you. Uh, you're muted, Steve.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I was, I want to, uh, just repeat my longstanding, um, opposition to the affordable housing requirement, because I think it's, it's counterproductive. It's going to result in no unit, no one wanting to build a unit that they can rent, because they can't rent it for enough to make the payments on the loan that it cost them to build it. So therefore, there's not going to be the units built, which is going to thwart the entire point of SB9, which is to create more housing. So I know that viewpoint has been rejected by this commission and apparently by the, the city council, but I, I'm pretty solid in, uh, my conviction that, uh, I'm right about this. So, um, that said, um, I, uh, support the taking of this, the six-foot spacing language out, because it seems to create an issue where we don't need to create one. And other than that, uh, I really commend, uh, staff for tweaking this ordinance and allowing the larger than 800 square feet were permitted by far and specifically addressing the point where one unit exists and you're adding a second house. I didn't think that that had been dealt with well before, and it's, it's dealt with nicely now, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barbos. Yes, Vice Chair Barnia, please.
Well, let me say that I too am pleased with the, uh, with the, uh, way that this particular, uh, ordinance is worded. I understand Steve's concerns, um, and as I said the last time, we talked about the affordability requirement. He may be correct, um, or he may not. And if a year from now, or it's some appropriate period of time, uh, the city comes to the conclusion that, um, this affordability requirement has placed an undue burden on property owners and nothing's happening. Um, then of course it can be in change, of course, it can be changed. I don't really know what the result of SB9 is going to be in this community. I don't think any of us do. Um, it's a great unknown. Um, it may well be that by the time, um, we begin to get some information, a statewide, uh, referendum or ballot measure, um, sponsored by the citizens in the cities of California will have invalidated it, but that remains to be seen. In the meantime, um, we've done what I think, um, the due diligence of our response to this state mandate uh, has required, and I look forward to seeing to what happens. I really have no idea how to predict whether this is going to have a measurable, a modest or a negligible effect on the city of Sonoma, and I'm sure we're all curious to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bardet. Commissioner O'Neil, please.
Um, I want to thank and congratulate staff for pulling this urgency ordinance together in such a comprehensive and quick way that the comments on it are really so minor. Um, so congratulations to you guys. I think you did an excellent job. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, Sheila.
Okay, yes, Commissioner Wiley.
I don't have very much to say, aside from what has already been said. Very happy with how this ordinance reads and, uh, very much appreciative of the efforts on behalf of the city staff and commissioners and, uh, especially our, uh, our active citizens and our, uh, our architect contingent in the community. Lot of work, lot of thought went into this, and, uh, I'm, I'm quite satisfied. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. McDonald, any thoughts?
Sorry, I apologize. Um, I, I, I don't have any other, um, um, comments. Um, they've all been said. Uh, I am, I am curious. I just want to make sure I understand the timeline for this and when, um, this will be implemented, um, assuming that the city council acts quickly. So that could probably be answered by staff, but, um, I'm supportive of this and want to see this go through as quickly as possible.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Staff, could you, uh, educate us on the timeline, please?
Yeah, I think it's in the staff report. Let me double-check my dates. I want to say we said likely March 2nd.
Um, so February 16th, uh, that's going to be too soon. March 2nd and then probably two weeks after so, um, and then it goes into effect 30 days after that.
So the, so it's for a second reading?
So yeah, I think the first reading and David chime in if you, um, have the actual dates, but I would think March 2nd would probably be when the first reading would be followed by the, uh, second reading adoption and then the 16th and then 30 days later would be April 16th.
That's date, right after that.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. All right. Well, I guess I'm the last one up. I too, uh, have very little comment, but I, I am very much encouraged that we reflect back on the process. We were under the gun for an urgent, uh, um, an urgent ordinance and this produced. And yet we still have the opportunity to come back and do some refinement to the point that we feel relatively comfortable with it. So, uh, I want, I want to, uh, be repetitive. I want to thank staff, job well done. I want to thank my fellow commissioners, job well done. And likewise, want to thank those interested citizens that uh, are so willing to contribute to the process because I think this is good and something that we can be proud of. So, uh, unless someone else has any comment, I would like to go ahead and solicit a motion. Okay, let's not be shy.
I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the, um, resolution and the, uh, modifications to our, um, zoning code, um, as, um, prepared by staff with the exception of eliminating the language that, um, requires setbacks between structures.
Is there a second? Second. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Barbos.
You're muted, you're muted, Steve. Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner McDonald?
Uh, yes.
Commissioner O'Neil?
Yes.
Commissioner Wyrick?
Yes.
Vice Chair Barnett?
I.
Chair Wellender?
Yes.
Thank you. The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, thank you. Items for discussion. Do we have any? If not, we're going to push it to our director for issues update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, as I mentioned earlier, I'll be absent from your March 10th meeting. I'll be there in spirit, but not in body or mind. Thank you. That's all I have.
Mr. Chair, Jeff, I have a couple of comments and I might, might make them. I don't know if the commission is aware, but, um, last week, uh, the court in the Protect Our Plaza versus City of Sonoma case rendered a ruling that the council's decision in, uh, 2019, finding that the cheese factory's 2004 use permit had vested, uh, was upheld. The preserve, uh, Protect Our Plaza challenged the council's adoption of that resolution based on the theory that the resolution increased the permitted uses that were allowed in 2004 and the court rejected that theory. Uh, rendering a 26 page opinion, uh, outlining the reasons why the council's actions were appropriate. So we're pleased with that result. If you'd like a copy of that, uh, decision, uh, we can arrange to have that sent to the commission for your review.
Thank you. Okay, from a staff standpoint, any other update?
I have a question.
Oh, please, we're moving on to commission comments. Go right ahead.
Oh, sorry. What's happening with getting a new, uh, new commissioner?
That's a great question. And I hope someone here has some encouraging words.
And a new alternate commissioner.
Yes.
I, I have the answer to the new commissioner. I don't have an answer to the alternate commissioner. The new commissioner can be appointed by, uh, council member Council Barnett. Um, but, um, under the Matty Act, the notice of its vacancy, uh, must be outstanding for at least 10 business days. And so the clerk issued the notice of vacancy. Oh, I'm not sure how long ago, but the 10 business days will not expire until tomorrow or Monday. So, uh, and we have to wait that 10 day period for people to apply and then from that list, a council member Barnett can make a selection. So I, I'm assuming it will occur soon.
Do we know if the city has received any applications?
It has.
Okay.
Great. And, and then in terms of the, uh, alternate, uh, do, David, can you give us any comment on that?
Uh, in discussions I've had with the city manager, I think there's a a concept that we would wait for that to occur should the role of the DR be removed from the DRHPC. I think that's an evolving discussion with the council. So I think, uh, I think we're waiting for that to, to be concluded.
Okay. Very good. Uh, Commissioner McDonald, do you have a comment?
Yes, um, I do. I just wanted to let the commission know that I'm not going to be able to attend the, the March meeting. And since we don't have an alternate and we've missionary, I just want to make sure we have a quorum. So hopefully that-
Bob got invited to David's son's wedding and the rest of us didn't?
Do, can we forecast any possible, uh, conflict for the rest of us for the March 10th? Seeing that, it looks like we should have a quorum there. I do have a couple of quick items from my standpoint. The, uh, melee project was a good example of what I think is a rather complex and convoluted kind of tree ordinance and interpretation, et cetera. And I am just going to encourage us to have an opportunity sometime to, to revisit that. Um, specifically I, I, um, there are a lot of trees that were real marginal on that side. In fact, one could almost argue that it was, you know, the community's best interest, they get cut down. Uh, and conversely, um, I'm, I'm, I'm feeling uneasy about this idea that a six inch oak can be compensated with a 15 gallon tree, given the fact that six inch oaks are kind of a tree that, uh, the community values. So I, I'm looking forward to hopefully adding to our bucket list of addressing various code items and, uh, issues would be that. And I know that there is also, um, would like, I believe we currently have a, a, uh, a, an in lieu fee amount of a hundred dollars for a pre that director store, you can clarify what, how, how it, how it is structured right now. Um, but I think that too needs to be kind of revisited at some point because, um, this, the, how melee parcels are developed, I would, uh, suggest that, um, needing 22 trees on one site or 18 on the other may be in excess of what one might consider necessary or logical or realistic. And then if there is an in lieu fee, it should be something that is, uh, again, has some arrogance and reasoning behind it.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, real briefly to respond, um, staff looked at the, uh, the tree ordinance and clearly one of the things that I haven't seen before for a long time is encode a dollar amount for something. And clearly as a rule, general rule, you try to establish fees by resolution because it's easier to get in there and navigate changes to a resolution for a particular thing. So specifically, uh, we have a $100 in Luffy for a 15 gallon tree, which uh, when the ordinance was written, I'm sure that was the going rate at the time. So clearly something we could do is strike that from our code and put in there fee as established by the council. And as they modify from that from time to time, you would know probably better than most of us that a 15 gallon tree, uh, is just the price of the tree, not necessarily the labor. And it's probably twice that amount now if we wanted to modify the ordinance. I wouldn't suggest putting a dollar amount back in the Lawrence. And I know we're going a little bit off, off agenda here, but, um, we can certainly return with a discussion about trees. Uh, Mr. Chair, you and I can work about, uh, a timing for when that could be made a possible for the commission.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner McDonald?
Yes, um, I, I, I totally forgot to bring this up, um, while we're talking about, um, the last, um, item, but something to discuss, uh, with, uh, our director has to do with fees. And, um, I do know of one fee that, um, I encourage and I've always supported and we weren't actually collecting for so long and I uh, got the last director to start implementing and collecting the fee and that with the Park and Lou fee. So, um, I guess my question, uh, would be if there was a fee, uh, to be waived as a result of a SB nine subdivision, would we, um, waive a fee like that? Um, but I know that there might be other fees like that. We just, we need to, to look at those, um, as we move forward with, um, implementing SB nine, uh, regulations.
Very good. Uh, anyone else? Vice Chair, yes?
Uh, just one last question, which is, do we have a projected timetable as to when, uh, regulations pertaining to multi-unit developments are going to be coming forward?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. We, we hope to have that to Christina, I think we said March the 2nd to the, let's see, March, March the 10th to the planning commission or we're going to go to, to the council first? I forget.
Yeah, I think, um-
Let me look at my calendar.
March 10th, I think, is a realistic goal. We've been, uh, lots of other initiatives coming up like parklets.
Yeah, we have it, um, scheduled to the council on the second for March the 2nd for multifamily. But that would mean that we'd need to go to the planning commission at some point. Yeah, we can't be going March 10th. I think we're going to have to come to the commission on March, March 10th. And then to the council the time after that, because we'd need a recommendation from your commission to pass on to the, to the council. That'll be March 10th. Okay, any other items? From anyone? Okay, I'm seeing a lot of silence.
Can I make a motion that we adjourn the meeting?
Uh, I don't think you'll get much argument. Is there a second?
Second.
And by everybody waving, that means we've all voted. So thank you. And, um, well done.
Good night.
Night.